Hi everybody. In this session, we're going to be looking at Luke chapters 17 to 19. I wanted to say by way of introduction that it's starting to feel from the study of the Gospel of Luke as if most of Christianity is about subtraction rather than addition. You know, we're always sort of talking about getting better, getting closer to God, you know, adding things into our life that keep us on the spiritual path. But if the Gospel of Luke is true, really it's more about letting go of stuff. It made me think about the fact that a year ago, I bought a condo that I've lived in for 23 now years. And in order to pay the mortgage, I had to take in a renter. Well, and that of course meant that now this little place with two bedrooms that I've lived in for a long time by myself, I now have somebody else that needs to live there. And I must have taken 20 trips to the thrift shop with all the junk that I had collected in there. And I was telling somebody the other day that I'm getting to the point where now not only am I having to give away the stuff I didn't want, I now don't have stuff or room for the things that I actually don't particularly want to give away, that I'm kind of attached to. So I'm thinking about that as I'm working on studying the Gospel of Luke and thinking about how Jesus is consistently saying, what makes for peace? What brings us peace in our lives is to really let drop away a lot of the societal and personal and family sort of pressures that we carry that kind of make common sense in our lives and in the culture. But if you really look at the impact that they have on our spiritual lives, not so much. They don't do us a lot of good. So in these chapters, we're actually going back to some things that we've already looked at in chapters nine, 10, and 11. In the outline that we started with initially in Luke, we could see that there's a mirror image of these themes that go on in this Gospel about the things that we're to let go of. And the overarching theme is what are the things that make for peace? What are the habits, the behaviors, the attitudes that really create peace in the world, that keep us on the way of God, that bring the Kingdom of Heaven right here into our lives right now? So we're going to look at a couple of those things in these chapters again, kind of reflecting back on earlier parts of the study. The first part that we find in chapter 17 is the challenge to, rather than try to find the Kingdom of God outside of ourselves, that we look within. And it's interesting, the core of this chapter is verse 21. And it's a time when the Pharisees are saying to Jesus, well, how will we know when the Kingdom of God is at hand? And Jesus says, no one will announce it to you. No one's going to say, look, there it is, or there it is, I see it. For behold, the Kingdom of God is already among you. I've heard this saying for a long time, and just from this study, I'm really starting to have an understanding of what that actually means. That sentiment is also echoed in chapter 19, verse 11, where Jesus is kind of entering Jerusalem. And the verse says, "They thought that the Kingdom of God would appear there immediately, like dropping down from heaven, like a miracle or some great dramatic event." And Jesus says, nope, that's not going to be happening. So why is this important? Let's flesh this out a little bit. We have to remember that in Luke, everything that indicates the presence of the Kingdom of God rotates around human behavior that has as its core the principles that make for peace, that are embedded in every human action, in everything we do, that there are certain actions that actually are the revelation of the Kingdom of God. So you could say in a sense, just from the things that we've studied so far, the Kingdom of God can be seen when the Sabbath is not a day of rules, but a day when we can be healed. The Kingdom of God can be seen when we don't just invite our family and our friends to the table, we invite the poor and the outcasts and the outsiders and the lawbreakers, when everyone is our family. That is when we will have found the way of peace. Or that people who have disabilities are not seen as people who have been in a sense cursed by God, but instead people who need our compassion, that we actually look for those people and purposely spend time with them. And these actions are embedded, the presence of the Kingdom of God. Jesus has placed the locus of the Kingdom of God right within the human heart. This is why the Pharisees are looking in the wrong place when they say, you know, where can we see it out there? Jesus is saying, you don't look for it out there, you look for it in here. In chapter 17, verses 21 and 20, the Pharisees seem like they want to measure and predict and control God's action by judging whether God is present. I think that's a pretty human response, that we want some kind of guarantee or some proof or something that we can see. They're still looking for the things of God's way out there, outside of themselves. God's kingdom is like a lava lamp almost. It's kinetic. It's not static. It doesn't stay in the same place all the time. It's expansive and it's inclusive. It's not an exclusive club that has outsiders and insiders. There's no walls in the Kingdom of God. And it has very small beginnings, like Jesus' reference to the mustard seed, which is such a tiny little seed, and yet grows into this huge, huge tree and provides a food and place to rest for birds of all kinds. So the Kingdom of God is really embedded in human life. So the Pharisees are really looking for something kind of spectacular. And Jesus is saying, no, it's really not. It's really how you live, which is actually in some ways a lot harder than if it were spectacular. So the second point here is that because the Kingdom of God is within, there won't be any signs. That this brings with it kind of some dangers or challenges, like the dangers of complacency because we don't see anything spectacular, or the dangers of not paying attention to the way we live, or the dangers of being attached to our status and our possessions. These are all, Jesus will say, sources of our judgment, the things that will really kind of work against us in the Kingdom of God. So poor Lot's wife, then he gives us a couple of examples of these people in the Hebrew Scriptures, but I wanted to kind of pick on Lot's wife because she's so pickhonest. She's a really normal woman, and she's kind of gotten stuck in this really abnormal situation. And she and Lot are fleeing Sodom. And she's been told, you know, you can't look back. You can't look back because you're going to be having to let go of everything because the whole town is going away because it's pretty rotten. But poor Lot's wife, she turns around and she's just got to look because she's attached. This is her past. This has been her life. And she turns into a pillar of salt. Kind of unfair, I thought, because this is such a human kind of a compulsion to constantly be looking back at what we used to have instead of be looking forward to what God has for our lives. Jesus also in this section where he talks about Lot's wife, he's pointing out people in their normal days. So the theme here is your normal life is very important. You have to pay attention to it and don't be complacent about it because that's where the Kingdom of God abides. So he says, okay, so on a normal day, two people will be doing whatever activities they are doing. One will be taken away and the other will be left there looking around going, why didn't I get picked? The other person has gone on to the Kingdom of God somehow, and that person who's just kind of going about their life but not really paying attention gets left behind. That's a scary notion. And so understandably, the people around Jesus say, well, where did they go? Where did those people go? Jesus kind of goes, eh, wrong question, and says this very bizarre thing about, you know, where the buzzers are, you'll find the corpses. So that's kind of his way of saying, you're asking really the wrong question. The question that you really should be asking is, will that be me? And what should I be paying attention to? How should I keep myself from being complacent? How should I pay attention to the things that really matter? How will I find those? And Jesus says, asking where? Well, you'll find the people that kind of didn't make it by the fact that their lives are dead and there's buzzards kind of flying around. What you should be interested in is how do I avoid being one of those people? So he goes on to talk about the importance of prayer. And Luke in this section in chapter 18, he's going to talk about what to pray for and how to do that. So entering the Kingdom of God by hearing the Word of God and then taking action in these really untraditional and unexpected ways is impossible without God's help. And that means we have to pray. We have to pray all the time and we have to pray relentlessly, not to get the stuff that we want necessarily, because God knows what we need and is very anxious to give those things to us. But because we need to keep our eyes open and our attention clear, prayer keeps us from becoming complacent about our lives and it keeps our attention on the things that truly matter. So we have these two really great stories here. One is the persistent widow. And then the second is the Pharisee and the tax collector. So let's look at these two really great stories. So in the story of the persistent widow, Jesus is talking about the necessity to pray often without becoming tired. But before he really talks about that, he tells this story about the persistent widow. And he talks about this kind of scummy judge who's got no moral character whatsoever. And the only reason he gives this widow what she's entitled to by justice is that she's absolutely the worst nag in the world. She will not let this guy rest until he gives her what is owed to her. And so Jesus is saying that persistence is not really about what we pray for because obviously from this story about the persistent widow, our prayers are going to be answered. They just are. They're going to be answered. So it's not the what we're praying for that the persistence is about. The persistence, Jesus wants to say, is that there are so many moments, so many twists and turns in our lives that we'll need prayer so that we can hear the Word of God and do it, that our prayer has to be constant. We just can't stop. And why is that? It's because it's not that easy for human beings really to find the Kingdom of God within. I think we're always looking for proof or signs or something spectacular outside of us. And that's absolutely the wrong place to look. So prayer in a sense is God's gift to us, saying, listen, you know, I understand your human nature has a weakness in this area, but you really have everything you need inside of you. Let your prayer be what turns you back to my presence within you so that you know when these unusual circumstances come and you're called to do something that's completely illogical and counter-cultural, you'll see it and you'll have the ability to do it. So there's the persistent widow. So the second story is really the important one where Jesus is talking about the necessity of prayer for mercy. This goes along with Luke's theme, which he comes back to over and over again, that the last shall be first and the first shall be last, that the people who think they have it all together are the ones who are going to be in big trouble. And the ones who know that their condition is dire and are praying for the mercy of God are the ones who really are going to figure it out and find their way in the Kingdom. So we have the prayer from a sinner. Again, this tax collector, he's an outsider. He's a lawbreaker. He probably isn't allowed to go into the temple if he's a Jewish tax collector. And his point is that he's asking, he's searching, and he's knocking. So we come back to that theme again in Luke, seek and you will find, knock and the door will be opened, ask and it will be given to you. Don't worry, it will. The tax collector is an outsider and he knows that he's in need of God's mercy. He can see his sin and his difficulty in the community very clearly. And he says, be merciful to me, God, because I am a sinner. He's not even asking for anything. He's just asking for a break. He's asking for God's mercy. In a sense, this is a plea that echoes Jesus, really his model prayer of the Our Father, forgive us our sins as we forgive those who sin against us. Luke is going back to that, the importance of simply asking God for mercy. And mercy specifically in the form of giving us a clarity about what the Word of God calls us to do. So then we have the Pharisee, the socially honored one. He's the insider and he's the normal guy. And you know, at first pass of his prayer, you know, he really does seem to have this sense of being really grateful for the gifts that God has given him. And yet, if you dig a little deeper into his prayer, he's kind of saying, I'm so glad that I've lived a life that doesn't really require God's mercy and so I don't really need it. This prayer exposes exactly the dangerous complacency that Jesus has been warning us against in chapter 17, the one that will get us to be the one left while somebody else is on their way to the Kingdom of God. Jesus is clearly saying in this story, it is absolutely wrong to make ourselves feel better about our lives by comparing ourselves with somebody that we consider kind of a loser or a scummy person. That is just a hugely dangerous behavior that will get ourselves into a lot of trouble. This very religious guy's prayer masks his arrogance before God. And his prayer actually intrinches him even more deeply into this path of thinking that he's got it all together by comparison with this tax collector. So there we have the importance of prayer. Prayer keeps us on the path by helping us to pay attention to our need for God's mercy and then to know when something comes our way, that we're going to be required to really make a choice for the Kingdom of God rather than conventional wisdom and ingrained habits that we've had. So we move on to this question, what must I do to inherit eternal life? Which is kind of what we've been talking about, eternal life, the Kingdom of God. How do we keep ourselves there? Luke describes the imperative to let go of status in the example of children, a rich man, the blind beggar, and Zacchaeus, which moves us into chapter 19. And if you'll recall, this is exactly the same question that the doctor of the law asked Jesus when he was trying to kind of justify himself. And he gets the story about the good Samaritan who is not considered in the law. And Jesus tells this doctor of the law, go and emulate the behavior of the Samaritan, who's a lawbreaker but actually is on the path to the Kingdom of God because he has compassion for this person who's been attacked and beaten. We're coming back to this same theme, what must I do to inherit eternal life? So let's look at children, the rich official, the blind beggar, and Zacchaeus. So children. Now, children in this society had really very little social standing at all. A teacher in normal situations would incur really kind of disgrace or humiliation by paying any attention to them in public because he would be associating himself with these little beings that have zero social status. So he would not ever be able to kind of lift his own self up in association with them. He would be shamed in a sense. And the disciples are actually trying to protect Jesus from shaming himself in public. That would be a normal behavior for the disciples of a rabbi. And yet Jesus again going back to saying, the Kingdom of God is not your normal way of doing things. And he says, instead of shunning these children, he calls them to himself and he makes them an actual example of how a person will find themselves on the way to peace. You must be like children who actually do not have any social standing in the community and associate yourself with them as with all other people who don't have that kind of social standing. Then we move into Jesus' conversation with this rich official. This is such a great conversation. And it's rich in so many messages. So we'll start with the fact that the rich official says, good teacher, what must I do to enter the Kingdom of Heaven? Good teacher. And Jesus kind of smacks him up the side of the head right from the very beginning and says, what are you calling me good for? Only God is good. Now, that might be a little confusing considering that we do believe that Jesus actually is the incarnate Word of God in the world. But if you look at this from the perspective of Luke's warning against attachment to social status, what this rich official is doing is kind of flattering Jesus. He's putting him in a position of high social status by calling him good. And Jesus immediately rejects the flattery because in the Kingdom of God, there is no better and worse. There's no insider and outsider. So this rich official, simply by his address, is creating by his words, this universe that puts Jesus kind of up on a pedestal and Jesus is having none of it. And then we move on. So he asks the question and Jesus says what he says about, you know, don't cheat, don't steal, you know, don't cheat on your wife, don't be mean to people, all the things that, you know, we would consider being a good person. This is interesting in two ways. One is that Jesus as a good Jew, the first thing he should have said was, love the Lord your God with your whole heart, your whole soul, your whole mind, your whole strength. That's an echo back to an earlier conversation in the first part of the Gospel that he actually did have with somebody. So we have to notice by its absence that Jesus is pointing out to this official, your riches have taken the place of God in your life. You have replaced your loyalty and your love of God with the stuff that you have and your status. And that is a problem and it's going to get you into trouble. So he's basically telling the official, you can't serve God and be attached to your wealth as well. The other thing that we notice about this list, it's all negative. Don't do this, don't do that, don't do the other thing. He has omitted the most challenging thing which we have been listening to all throughout the Gospel of Luke, which is the commands to include people, to reach out to people, to be a healing presence, to really engage in this ridiculous love that God has for He kind of traps the rich official into getting him to kind of say this because the rich official goes, well, I've done all those things since my childhood, so you know, what else is there? And Jesus pauses and says, if you really want to do this the right way, get rid of everything you have and give it to the poor who need it way more than you do, and come join me. And it says, the rich man was sad. And in his conversation later with the disciples, Jesus comments, it's really hard for a rich person to come to God because those possessions, they really have us controlled. And then of course Peter has to raise his hand and says, but oh Jesus, we've given up all our possessions. Are we good? You know? Jesus probably kind of patiently says, yes. You know, and everything you've given up, you're going to get back a hundredfold in whole different kinds of ways. So the last part of this piece is the blind beggar and Zacchaeus, which I'm going to talk about together. Jesus gives both of them a voice, a standing in society. Both of these men, both the blind beggar and Zacchaeus, for totally different reasons, are shunned, are outsiders, are rejected, are impure, are unclean, kind of losers. And it's interesting to note that the blind beggar is abjectly poor, while Zacchaeus is a really wealthy guy. And yet, the Gospel points out, they are both in the exact same position in their society, which is rejected and left outside for different reasons. They're both lost people. And in both situations, Jesus stops. He is on his way to Jerusalem, which we know is the entire point of the Gospel of Luke. Jesus is on his way to Jerusalem to give his life for his people. And yet, even with Jesus' kind of relentless journey towards Jerusalem, he stops in the moment to take care of these two lost souls. The incarnate Word of God, traveling towards his ultimate purpose, stops for these two individual lost people and brings them both into the community, gives them both status in the community. And both of these guys become a surprising example of how one finds themselves on the way to God in the Kingdom. This is how one joins the way, the cry for mercy, receiving it, joining Jesus on the journey, glorifying God, and then using one's possessions or resources to care for others. And both of these men respond to Jesus in exactly this way. No longer shunned, they're both restored to the community, and they become the way of peace. They're not just talking about it, they become the way of peace. They show the way to others for how one does this. And so lastly, we're looking at the core of the Gospel, the things that make for peace again. And we find Jesus now entering Jerusalem, knowing that he has not been heard or understanding or understood. He's now ready to serve God's purpose. He's headed towards the cross. He knows he's headed there. And he knows that he has not been heard. So we see kind of four, we notice four aspects of his entry into Jerusalem as contrasted with earlier at the beginning of Luke's Gospel. His very small beginnings with 12 has now turned into this huge multitude of people who have now taken off their garments and thrown them down to make way for Jesus. So this is kind of a metaphor that Luke is offering us that says, you know, clothing is kind of a way that you tell the status of a person. And Jesus' impact as he enters Jerusalem is that these people, this multitude, they are shedding the signs of their status and their place in society and placing them on the ground for Jesus to walk on. the ground for Jesus to walk on. Yet another way that Luke has of telling us, "Let go of those things that keep you off the path." So he's proclaimed by the animal he rides and the blessing that he receives from this multitude. The animal he rides is a colt, and it's a symbol, an Old Testament or Hebrew Scriptures symbol of the Messiah, as is the praise. "Blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord." Both of these things indicate that He is taking this place as Messiah, God's presence. And again, He is rebuked by the religious guys, the religious leaders who have not heard, who do not understand, who are still attached to their position in society, the lowly are proclaiming Him, while the seriously religious complain and plot His death. And in the great lament, we can hear Jesus weeping over Jerusalem. "Jerusalem, Jerusalem, how long have I longed to gather you to myself, and you would not allow it? If this day you only knew what makes for peace, but now it is hidden from your eyes, and you will be destroyed." And then, at the end of chapter 19, He steps into the temple and wipes it clean. And this, in a sense, is His symbolic action that describes everything that He has done up to this point and everything that He is calling us as His disciples to do. He's cleaning out the junk in the temple. He's getting rid of all of the things that do not make for peace and that are getting in the way of the people finding their path to God. He's making a way. So in summary, you know, we have to say, so far in the Gospel of Luke, that some respond well to this way of peace and some respond poorly. The poor responses will bring appropriate reward, that if we ignore the things that make for peace, we risk losing everything we have. The Pharisees are trying to tie down the Kingdom of God. They look outside rather than within. They use prayer to avoid God's mercy, and they compare themselves favorably with others by retaining their own status. The rich official has left God out of his religious practice and struggles to give his possessions to the poor. The disciples, they even try to save Jesus' social standing by keeping the kids away from Him. And the listeners ask, "Where is the Kingdom of God?" Instead of, "What should I be paying attention to?" Responding well brings the great reward of peace, as the story of the gold coins teaches us. The lepers, the blind beggar, the tax collectors, their responses, they cry out for mercy. The disciples have given up their possessions to follow Jesus, and the children seek to be with Him. So, as always, these chapters challenge us to think about, what are those things that we need to set down, to lay aside, so that we too can find the way of peace and stay on the path to God? Thank you so much for being with us during this session. God bless.